All right, I'm going to call to order this Hancock County Commissioners Regular Meeting, August 2nd, 2022 to order.
My move to approve the agendas presented.
Second?
I was in favor.
Hi. Do we have any public comments today?
Well, what's, is this your only on the agenda? Does you need to be public comment? You, you had an issue this morning. I didn't know what it was, but this may be your only opportunity to speak if you're not on the agenda.
I should be on the agenda, right?
I don't know. Are you with Dennis?
No, I'm just have a couple of questions about my money right away and my plan to say.
No, you're not. That wasn't ever asked to be on the agenda. We spoke in the office, but you never asked me to put on an agenda or anything.
Okay, so you're not on the agenda and the public comment section gives you the opportunity to comment, but it doesn't guarantee that you get a response.
Yeah.
We might consider, well, you understand what this issue is, and I think, I think, well, I think, I think you anticipate correctly that we're probably going to send you back somewhere, but why don't you take this opportunity, come to the mic, you have three minutes, tell us what your issues are and whatnot, and then we'll, we'll see whether or not we are prepared to respond on it, okay?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself and.
Benjamin Scott from Central Maine, and I just moved up onto a piece of property there at home since 93. People had thought it was a discontinued town road and I went to this office, the office of this lady, and we couldn't find anything on discontinuance. I'm trying to find my town. I talked to the selectmen. They sent me here and they said that the county commissioner would write me a right of way. So I have a legal right of way to my property. And I'm also trying to figure out, because my land is landlocked if I didn't have that road. So that road's been there for a long, long time, always used it, people before me used it. So I'm trying to find out what the right of way, the wit, the right of way is. And for legal purposes, I want to start clearing on the side of the road to improve the road, but I don't want the neighbors to get upset. And there's three or four neighbors there. So I'm looking for, what is my legal right of way? And I'm also looking for someone, I guess my selectmen say that someone here can write me a legal right of way that I can put into my deed.
Okay, first one? Uh, I don't have any. Well, first of all, I'm unaware of any authority we have to write right of ways. I mean, that's something that a deed would specify. It sounds to me like you need an attorney. First of all, we cannot give legal advice. We can't tell you what your right of way is. And some research needs to be done by a, by an attorney to determine what your deed says and, and you know, what it means and what authority you have under that deed. So I'm sorry you got erroneous information from your town because we, we cannot, we do not give out right of ways. We don't have that authority. This is not a county way, so we don't have any authority over this way. If it's a town road. So sorry you had to spend this time this morning, but it's another step in your process to get this done and you should really go see an attorney, somebody that's good on civil law and consult with them and, and get that done through them, okay?
Okay. And you have your copy, you have your copy of your deed and everything correct, so it's not something that you need to go to the deeds office upstairs.
No, I have, I have.
All right, good luck to you.
It is a long process and it started a long time ago.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, any other public comment today?
Second one.
All right. Eighteen minutes.
I'm removed to approve the minutes and the July 19th special meeting is presented.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, some employee recognition.
I'm going to move to recognize and thank 911 dispatcher Jennifer Day for five years of service to Hancock County.
Thank you.
I will second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, just like, I put on record that Jen has also taken on responsibilities of QA right now, filling in for Megan Kelly, so she's not only doing dispatching, but she's also extra work at filling in for QA, which is a lot of work. So I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. I feel like I see Jennifer's name all the time in your reports.
Yeah.
All the good work she does. Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to our discussion of jail. Do we have Bill? Photo?
Right there.
There he is.
We've only seen you in movies.
Yeah, I mean, you still look like.
Thank you. Good morning. The first thing I need to say is that I'm in a bit of a loss because our architectural expert, who is leading the discussion of our, our presentation, is not present. So I think the way that I, I would like to handle this is just to give you a general overview and take your questions. I'm here to answer and try to make you more familiar, familiar with the process. And again, I apologize that, that our specialist or expert in, in the field is, is not with me today. So that places us a bit of a loss, however. I am president of the organization, so I certainly am here to represent our efforts and to answer your questions.
Well, Bill, excuse me, let me, I don't want to interrupt, let me craft perhaps your conversation with us today because what we three are interested in more than anything is the specific process of progress, you know, making towards restoring that. So we've heard, we've heard the, the background, we understand that, you know, we're generally supportive of getting it done and whatnot, but we haven't heard much since the $200,000 award and we're really, you know, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what you need, what you're going to need down there and whatnot. So what we really like to talk about is, again, the process and the progress that you're making towards total restoration, okay?
Okay, so to say the first word first, the process is a four phased process that will take us through 2025 and possibly beyond. And at last, our, my, the person who's most familiar with the project is now manager of the room, so. But the process is a four, is four stages that'll take a number of years. The progress we've made is that we've gotten several grants since the $200,000 grant. And there is, there's a matching amount of money that's being put forward by the Historical Society to, 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 it's, you know, when, when this grant, there's often a match involved, you know, not always. So the, the progress is that we've, we've sent out bids. We've started sending out bids and reviewing material. We've had people here to look at the building, interior, exterior, mainly exterior. And one of the things that I'm happy to say is that with every discussion that we've had, we discuss, no matter what the timeline is for the contractor, we discuss what can be done immediately. In other words, how we can keep the water off the building. We're talking about sheeting that would be actually attached to the metal sections along the roof. We would actually attach sheeting that would just divert the water off of the roof. In every case, what we're talking about, not only is the future, but also what can be done. So I think with that, I will turn you over to someone who could be a little bit more specific. And again, I do welcome questions. Do you have any questions before I might go to sit down, Bill?
No, I want to see it from Karen.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have questions and comments.
If I'm going to screen share, I'll need to be co-host.
We have, we have someone who, that would actually like to show their presentation on Zoom, and if she can share her screen, that way we would be able to see the presentation.
I just need to be made co-host, otherwise it's disabled.
Kara, I can't, I can't see the name of it. Who is that?
This is Holly Hendricks. She's a board member of the Historical Society. My name is Carla Haskell. I'm an architect. I am a member of the Historical Society and chair of the whole restoration.
Is that better? We can't make you a host without canceling us as host.
Oh, multiple sharing, sometimes.
Can you make me a co-host?
No. We don't, we don't see.
Holly.
I, I can't screen share then, Carla, I'm sorry. It's disabled for participants.
Multiple sharing.
No, I, I just, we don't have that capability here. No, because if we try to change the host, she becomes the host and we don't.
We were trying to arrange this before you.
That would be my suggestion is, you know, maybe we can put this off again if we can't.
Well, we have, we have the slides for you, sir.
Okay.
I think we should be good.
Yeah, I actually don't have, but I can, I do have my computer, so I can put that up on my screen.
And we want, we have the, we have the slides.
Thank you. We'll be able to.
Yeah, we have the slides of the presentation in our book, so we're just not really.
Oh, and a lot of this is what we've seen before.
Yes, we've seen before. So what we wanted to do was certainly address the letter that was sent to us from Redmond and Mitchell, and just make sure that we hit, answered some of the questions or maybe provided some clarifications on some of the statements. And really just provide you with an update with regard to over the past six months, really, what has happened with the Ellsworth Historical Society, formation of this committee, and now the receipt of, in fact, the bidding process for the construction project. So the first slide is talking about essentially the preservation committee, which was formed. Board itself has been bolstered by a few new board members. We have the expertise of grant writers now, an architect myself, museum professional, so it's a, it's a board that's really quite diverse and quite focused on scholarship. And really, I think trying, I think you'll see the Ellsworth Historical Society through really the rigors of what the commissioners have been presenting through and what's required to administer this grant as being a lifting of, I think, the status of the, the board itself. So I think we're all feeling pretty proud of what these six months have resulted in. We have a timeline and in fact, this committee was formed in December of 2021. And we have, and that's what is sort of new. We created a phased approach to the restoration project. Understanding that in fact, this is phase one, that we have been the beneficiaries of this revitalized meat ranch, which has kicked us off for phase one in a very good way. But there's also a phase two and a phase three, which will address wholeheartedly the exterior of the building in a very serious way. And we realize that there's going to have to be some serious fundraising that needs to happen to make this work. And so as we talked about the fundraising expertise, we have hired a person to help us through basically that first feasibility of what we're calling really a capital campaign for the remaining funds. And that feasibility study is going to analyze what the building's use is going to be, what community support is out there, what is the best fit? And that's going to be a process and that's going to take some time. We're going to be interviewing many people in order to get that information together and really result in a feasibility report that then is going to be our entree into pretty serious fundraising. So you see on the next page, restoration plan, pretty simply broken out, and this is based on contractor input and a professional cost estimation, who we had look at this project recently, and those plans that you're familiar with. So we've broken it out very simply. Masonry is of course the first phase and most urgent critical. The roof is the second. Some of the fasteners are, are just through age becoming corroded. And so the idea is to remove that slate, put proper barriers on underneath, make sure all of the shaving is in good shape, and then refasten that, that existing slate roof. And oh, by the way, adding flashing chimney repointing, because of course we're talking about that upper level, and re-flashing all the chimneys that require the re-flashing. So that will be a wholehearted project. You can see that's estimated to be even more than the masonry wall. But to tell you the truth, the roof is not leaking, it's not as critical as, as, as the masonry. So that's why we're doing the walls first. The building is also set up with corbels. As you know, those corbels are releasing right now. The gutter actually sits within that brick corbel. It's actually a bit of a design challenge. So the brick has to be redone at the corbel first before the new gutter can get placed. And that's why, again, it makes sense to create the structure that's going to support the, the, ultimately the gutter system once again. And most of it was originally covered and will be using carpet. That would be the specification. And then phase three is addressing the carpentry repairs, windows, a lot of the trim, sills, and then creating an ADA ramp. Working, you know, with the county, understanding that that ramp will be outward of the building from foot creaming. And then phase one, we're talking about basically the project timeline. So right now, bid documents are out for bid. They were issued in July. We'll be receiving them August 10th. We've met with, they've been issued out to four masonry contractors who are, have experience. They're providing not hard bid, because it would be unfair to ask. Because there's probably quite a few movements when you're looking at especially the south and the north walls. But they're providing a proposal on cost, they're providing schedule, they're providing their experience and methods and means that they're going to be approaching the project. And we will select the best proposal that we see. So it may not be cost-based, it might be schedule-based, or it might be experience-based. And we've allocated different percentages for that selection criteria.
Can I ask, when do you, when do you hope, after you get those bids, and when, when in August is your deadline?
August 10th. And so usually, once we receive bids, it takes a couple of weeks. We'll want to make sure that the board approves it. Bill and I will be reviewing those proposals and then we'll be making a recommendation to the board. So that usually takes a couple of weeks and then of course, there's contract negotiation. We'll have contracts and insurance and, and there'll be a bid bond as well.
When did the bids go out?
Bids went out mid-July.
Have you received any bids back yet?
They're due in August 10th and we met with two of the masonry contractors who are going to be providing. I actually sent in the dendum yesterday and the two other contractors are still considering if they're going to put it.
Reason I ask is that we had a sizable project for Hancock Ranch for the courthouse.
Yes, that was my concern. So I was pretty heartened that the contractors who have responded so far, we met with Bill and I onsite to review it before they put the bid together. It's Knows Industrials, they're out of Portland, and Haskell and Hall. And Haskell and Hall in fact was a masonry contractor, I don't know Bill if you remember, many, many years ago, did the courthouse masonry restoration. So we was, they were familiar with the site. So I'm very heartened. These are two very reputable companies.
I really want to throw some water, that Dennis, we had as many as three or four contractors talk about the ramp in one bid, is that correct?
Six.
Six.
Landowners.
It's six.
Yeah, well, I'm, well, crossing our fingers.
Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's a tough corner, man. There's no doubt about it. This is an appealing project for a masonry contracting firm. It's high profile. They, they dedicate most of their work towards historic restoration, as you can imagine. That's where they really make their money. So, so we'll see, but you're absolutely right. I can't, we can't count on anything. So the timeline is showing this negotiations, signing the agreements between the owner and contractor, issuing the notice of award in August. Then we're actually, you can see right in August, we're going to be then meeting with both the city and yourself. You know, I've been involved in public projects before, making sure the neighbors are aware, making sure, of course, you as very close neighbors, we're going to have to strategize and talk to you about the impact of construction on the parking lot. It's been pretty heartening and the two contractors who we did meet for an hour each. The, the impact around the building is going to be about six feet, which is just about at the edge of the pavement. So there's a grass strip, if you remember, on the south wall and along the north wall that they'll be able to either use lifts. One contractor actually was very much thinking about using lifts. The other contractor is strategizing for winter construction and that would, they would have basically scaffolding on. We're seeing, what we're seeing is probably the north and the south side and contained within that period, got those constraints.
Are you talking about restoration, just the cell area or the living area too?
Well, what we're going to be, and this is why it's a proposal, because although we have estimates, as you know, you cannot count on cost estimates really expressing the reality of what these contractors are going to ask for. So we have asked, and in fact, we could go right to the next page. Ideally, phase one is the masonry restoration of, and this is the $300,000 project that we're in the midst of fundraising, would be all four sides though. We know that we have a certain amount of money when we get the bids that we'll be able to work with the contractor on. And the north and south walls of the jail and certainly any, that corner of the residence are going to be the critical ones. So we're going to make sure that whatever their bid ends up being, we have a certain pot of money, that our money is going towards those items first, and that's going to be the strategy. And then we're going to work with them on those secondary emergency necessities. But the corbels are such an important part that the scaffolding may in fact go around the jail in order to get that, those repointing taken strong enough to, to carry over. And then as Bill was talking about, part of the proposal is also what we're calling temporary gutters and downspouts. So even if it's plastic gutters and downspouts or if it's, as Bill was discussing, sheet EPDM that's going to flop over basically the eve to, to make the water not go down the wall but out. You know, we're going to be looking at what, what makes the most sense. And we'll be, if, if any of these solutions impact county land, we're going to make sure that you're part of it. We'll, we'll typically hold monthly site meetings that, that, that the county will be invited to attend, to make sure that we're all working together. Because we do know even that it's been, that we've had our ups and downs in relationships. We do want to make sure that this is smooth and that this is resulting in hopefully what we're all going to be pretty excited. So. So, so this is showing again, and this was part of the bid documents, the scope of work for phase one. And so it's basically isolating the walls as being the scope. And then of course, the, the last page talking about the years 2022 to 2023. And actually, I do want to update that because we have another, we have a contractor and a couple of contractors who can't do the work this year. We have one contractor who can do the work this year that will be putting in a bid. We have another contractor who can't do it until next year. And the grant actually extends to August of 2024. So we've decided in this addendum to, in order to encourage getting alternate bids that in fact, they could utilize next year as a construction period. But they would have to provide a proposal and include the cost of protecting the eve and, and, and stopping the water infiltration in the wall. So, so that, that will be part of that scenario if in fact, they put that forth. And I guess the idea is maybe it'll be cheaper if they do it in the summer, but that cost of, you know, will have to be included because we're not, we are not going to go through another winter like we did last week. Regarding finances, which was one of the questions and one of the criteria of this presentation, you can see that we have in hand right now $273,000. That includes my in-kind contribution for architectural work and I'll be treating this like any other project that I have in my office. So that will include monthly requisition meetings. Of course, my office is just down the block, so I'll be able to attend weekly meetings just to make sure that we're all answering questions and issuing site memos so that we keep track of the project. You can see we have the $200,000, the $35,000 for the historical society. We have cash. We have cash donations of eighteen thousand. Um, we actually have our, in, in good, um, running for a twenty thousand dollar grant that we feel like we'll, we'll, we'll be getting. There's another grants that, that we're very, very hopeful for, and we haven't matched from main community foundation for that grant, so.
Is that one of the six you've projected here?
That's correct.
So, Kyle, you've got, at this point, you've got ninety-two thousand, perhaps towards the three hundred and sixty of these phase two. What, that leaves two hundred and fifty thousand. What's the, what's the plan for that?
That's going to be serious fundraising, um, and that's why we want to have this again be, uh, a, a professional level of fundraising. We want to make sure that, uh, we're getting advice on, uh, this feasibility, which is again, talking about the museum, what sort of funds that's going to attract, uh, from the community. We're going to be interviewing people, some of whom could be potential donors. Um, we're going to work, and it probably will be a year while the construction is going on for this, this first phase. Um, uh, really trying to gain confidence from the community and from potential nonprofit fund, fund, funding sources, uh, that we're serious. We've gotten denied a couple of grants, and what they've done is they've encouraged us to come back. And I have to tell you, I'm actually a reviewer for the Delvedere Foundation, which has a, a grant project, um, or, or grants for historic restoration projects. And, um, I know that sometimes you want to see a, a grant come back a second time to make sure we understand that they're serious and that they have all of their ducks in order. And, um, and so we've been encouraged for these two other historic restoration grants to come back. So we know that that's the process. We're in that world of grants. But we also realize that this can be funded solely through grants.
You know, I've said before, it's almost trendy to donate, uh, some of the money to Woodlow. And I don't know what there is, but when you're talking about the local jail, you know, it just doesn't seem to be trendy. And, and I just, I'm curious as to what, and I'm not asking you, I just going to be curious in the future to see what strategy and tactics you take to get contributions that the historical society hasn't been able to get the last thirty years.
Well, I think you've hit the nail on the head with regard to confidence and maybe awareness. It's amazing how many people have not been in the structure. So I really feel, um, and I know, Cornell, you took a peek into the jail the other day, but, um, you know, I went down to Philadelphia, and now I'm becoming a jail nut. But I went to the Eastern State Penitentiary, and I don't know if anybody has gone to that structure. It's right downtown Philadelphia. It is mammoth, um, compared to ours. But it has all the elements that our small jail structure has. Lacking the fact that you have this amazing symbiotic relationship of a family living and supporting, and a mom cooking dinner for the, the people in the jail, and what that experience was like, and how that's not found, um, anymore. That was actually a strategy for counties in the eighteen hundreds to save money, right? They, they provided housing, they had mom cooking, it all worked out pretty well. That was a bygone era. But I really feel that as people see it and understand what a unique structure is there, um, it's not just this old brick building that to most people is fairly on, on. Um, it's, it's not a, a special looking building. They, they know it's old. But what's inside of it is very special. And so that's the word um, and the story that we're going to be hopefully captivating for people, like people who have not come in. And offer tours to people, because I think once they see it, this two-story, uh, granite block that has two levels of jails in the catwalk and, you know, um, and, and the weekends, it's, uh, it's pretty captivating. So I think it's going to sell itself, I guess is what it needs to. But we'll see. And we'll certainly give it the best shot we can, because this is our shot. Um, so you see, as we're talking about phase two, the removal of the, the monsument slate, we've already talked about that, and the addition of the permanent gutters, all that cover, um, that's, that's going to be a heavy lift. Um, and important. Um, you can see that we, we put together some strategies. These are beginning strategies, but this is recognizing it's going to be a mix of, hopefully, we'll have a little bit of surplus from this grant, uh, push that we're doing these next two years. Um, uh, more grant applications, fundraising events and activities, business contributions. This is all going to be really, um, you know, our, 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 our hope even, um, because we, we became aware late in spring of the possibility of even earmarks that have gone to historic restoration projects, uh, in the state. So that, that has broadened awareness to us, and then hopefully some cash donations. So, so that's going to be a big, uh, a big effort. And we're seeing that it, it'll take a couple of years certainly for us to, um, achieve our goal. And then phase three, and again, we're, we're trying to bracket this. I mean, it might even be to two, twenty twenty-six. We know that, you know, these things have a life of their own. Um, but then it will be a lighter lift, uh, for, again, the wood ADA ramp. We really want to make sure that the site drainage is tying properly into the catch basins. So there's that last piece of work, again, making sure that we're doing the right thing by the site as well. And then again, that same sort of mix of grants and fundraising. And this is what, what we're laying out as a linear process. But I think if we, if anybody has been involved in fundraising, you know, you, you get surprises along the way. And, but I think within this period of time that we're talking about, um, it will allow some flexibility. Um, we may get a big, you know, a bit, a big donor, or, you know, it may come through a lot of small donors. We don't, we don't really do yet. And that's what this feasibility is on as well. Let's understand it. These are great, a list of grant sources, um, that we've, uh, have been applying to already, and we know that there'll be more. In fact, this list has gotten bigger since the month that we provide, prepared this. And then the goal is, of course, um, that, um, this has been a museum. I've been part of some pretty, um, fun, um, community events, uh, where we've had the, uh, building opened up. And, um, of course, the, the children love it, and it certainly is an educational opportunity that we want to tap into. It's an educational opportunity for college students, uh, who are doing studies in criminal justice. And, and, you know, so there's the, the potential for its educational, collecting oral histories, um, are things that we want to do, interviewing people, people like yourself, Bill, who, you know, actually worked there, and we want to make sure that, uh, people like Bill Fern, who used to interview, uh, inmates, getting prepared for it and sitting in the kitchen, um, uh, over a cup of coffee with, with the inmates. So those stories are really pretty remarkable. And so we are going to continue on a limited basis. We're going to control the, the, the groups. And of course, we don't attract huge crowds, but just make sure that people, we're using this time to get people, um, familiar with, with what's going on inside. And actually, the inside is, is, is a wonderful, um, exhibit in itself. And then these are current events that actually we have already, um, been involved in. We, uh, participated in, in a James Walk, which was basically about neighborhood, um, historic restoration and renovations. We had, you know, even during COVID, there were appointments that were made. So we've been, we've been trying to make sure that people know that the place is not closed.
When we talk about use, you talked earlier, we're still talking about continuing to use exclusively as a museum and museum-related issues, right?
Absolutely. This is following the deed requirements for it. And we all know that, um, thoughts on what a museum are, are expanding, um, you know, in this day and age, because people are real, especially historic museums, are realizing they have to captivate, um, our younger audiences in different ways. I think we all know what, what I'm talking about, but that kind of outreach. So we are trying to think about potential, um, and, and, and just as we've been seeing, um, with, uh, the engagement that we've got, um, make sure that we have talks. And, you know, that there are reasons for people to come to, to the building and see it as really a community, a part of development, uh, economic development, because we all know that as people are starting to realize, and we've all known all along, that Ellsworth is a pretty special place. Tours like to come, stay here and visit. A lot of people like to come to Ellsworth, believe it or not. And having a place like a museum in the downtown is a wonderful amenity for a chamber of Congress to, uh, put out there. And so I have been meeting actually with the Chamber of Commerce to talk about how we can, uh, become more engaged, uh, with that aspect. Cause obviously advertising marketing is very important for museums. So we're seeing this as, as being, um, it was a good fit in the seventies, maybe it wasn't capitalized as well. Um, but we certainly want to make sure that this investment and of time and efforts, um, are going to result in the success. Having a financial plan that also sustain, sustains not only this building, but also the historical society, other buildings. So making moves towards endowments to make sure that they have money for maintenance is going to be important.
Wish you to learn a lot more at the end of the month.
The end of the month, we'll, we'll certainly have, yeah. Yeah.
I will be.
But I guess we want to make sure that we're thinking beyond that, too. And I guess that's what this presentation is for, too.
Kyle, we've, we've talked several times about the, the parking problem down there for all activities, not just the, you see. We've, we've been, we've tolerated over the years, you know, the being open in, in Robbins Museum. It may increase with, uh, your efforts. But there is a particular issue that we have talked about that, that I think we need to talk about earlier than later. And that's the handicap ramp, because as we see it, we're going to lose somewhere between two and four parking spaces by having that come out of the north side. And, uh, I'm wondering personally, this is just my personal opinion, whether or not something couldn't be incorporated so it comes in the front of the residential area from the parking lot as opposed to coming on the, on the east side rather than the north side. And we wouldn't lose that, those critical parking spaces. So somewhere along the way there. And gentlemen, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to formally, uh, notify, you know, and consult, have the historical society consulting, uh, with Dennis. I think very knowledgeable, very, and, uh, be a contact person for these events so that, uh, you have a problem with that. I mean, Scott Atkins was heavily involved, but I think that's too much to ask Mike. Pick this up now, this late in the game. And have Dennis as our point man, and, and Carly, you, and Bill, and, and whatnot, case they post contact. Because that is something I think you need to sit down and discuss with Dennis. Perhaps the impact of having it on the north side, and perhaps some possible alternatives to not losing those parking spaces.
Thank you. And thank you actually for pointing Dennis, because that was going to be one of our questions. Um, and so having that designated person, we are talking about years down the line, but we can talk about options and what the resulting options are. I should know what you have.
Oh, you're okay with Dennis?
Oh, my feeling is that that goes without saying, you need to involve the administrator and facilities director. I mean, that's part of your line of communication. And if that's not done, sorry, it's not going to succeed. You know, you have to, you've talked, you've talked about involving, uh, county government. Well, that's how you do it. And, um, I think that that needs to happen, that now. You know, when you're talking about, you said you're, uh, talking about learning a lot, you know, by the end of the month, those two folks need to be in the loop. Uh, communication is just not you coming in, giving, you know, a presentation every once in a while. I think it's a lot more than that, that's, you know, working with the administrator and the facilities director.
Yeah, point well taken. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your attention. Very interested to hear about your results.
Yes.
Yep. Keep Dennis involved. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Uh, I want to move on now to John for our ARP update.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, yes, so, uh, I think we talked about it, but I just keep it on the list, uh, front of mind. The MCA is going to have their grant round opening in twenty twenty-two, October still is, is the goal. So, uh, certainly going to stimulate, you know, some of the towns that are close in the county, you know, that want to apply for that grant. I'm sure Swans Island would back in, but, um, so we'll keep an eye on that. We'll also be participating in it with some other towns, not necessarily with Hancock County. So we'll have an idea of how this new group, MCA, is new, first time to run a grant round, how they're going to do it, um, how it's going to be different from the last one, and then, you know, probably lessons learned going forward, so.
Joe, excuse me, uh, the grants from MCA, a lot of those going to require batches?
Well, that, that's a good question, and we keep, what we keep saying as we're waiting for the rules to come out, so we understand it. Um, that's, that's the challenge, right? We just, we can kind of go on the last one, and we can say yes. That would be the quick, um, probably straightforward answer. But without the rules, we don't know. And so hopefully the rules will hit in August timeframe, you know, September at the latest. So people can get, start getting ready for what they need. But until we see those, I wouldn't dare say affirmative yes, but how about a quasi yes?
So John, they, so we're talking about the grant round for the fall, but like, when do they actually find out? Will they find out in the fall?
Another, another very good question. The last I saw was, I think they're going to take probably a little bit more time this time around, probably because there'll be a lot of, um, grants, because there's a lot more money. And I think it's going to be, um, I'll say early winter, December may, maybe. I don't know if we're going to push to January, because that was one of the challenges. They had a public forum and looked for feedback, and I think one of the, one, one of the challenges people had was, don't take too long, because we want to get going. Um, so I think that they'll, they'll have to take that into account as they go.
Anything else for us?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything else for us today?
Um, yeah, so I just follow up to GWI presentation. Um, we'll, you know, kind of keep that, the utility district concept on there. Um, I do have some potential other folks that, uh, will do presentations in the coming months. Um, and I know specific town updates, but going back to that original one where we said, we'll, you know, expect the grant round to come. Um, we're going to be reaching out to those towns, although some, for some reason, August and May makes it hard to get ahold of anybody. But we will, uh, we'll keep working on that. Um, and that'll, will give you an update as we get closer to the grant round. But that's what I have today.
All right. Take care, John. Any other questions, John?
How did we leave the discussion with regards to the NBI, John? I mean, were we just taking that under advisement and?
With a utility district?
Yes, the utility district.
Yeah, um, I think that the takeaway from that is I'm going to, um, provide a little more context and maybe bring in a couple of other, um, uh, service providers that might have a little bit different view of how they may do it. But, um, your request was for me to, you know, kind of guide that utility district conversation and see where that, what, what's needed, you know, from a, um, kind of a, I'll call it legal agreement, contract inter-local agreement type concept, um, ownership concepts. Where's, you know, what's the money? What's the, what's the, um, um, area, you know, that would make sense to do? So that's, that's my homework, that I'll, I'll be feeding, feeding, uh, feeding the commissioners in the coming meetings.
And, and how we fit in.
Correct. Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to move to accept and file July report for mission broadband as presented.
Second of the motion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
All right, Miller.
Miller is not here, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to move to accept and file UT's, UT supervisor's July report as presented.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I'm going to move to approve the fire protection emergency response agreement for township seven, with town's rules for all present.
Second of the motions, others in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Leroy.
Good morning. Just my monthly report there, um, a couple other little additions to that, um, just some updates. Just my monthly report there, a couple other little additions to that, just some updates. I have talked to the Columbia Air folks. They did hire a mechanic. I did talk to him extensively yesterday. So there is some pretty good movement in that direction. As a matter of fact, Columbia's council is on on with us today. So that's, that's a positive note there.
That's great.
And the only other thing is they've been having a little problems with fuel. They're out of avgas right now, but quite frankly, it's beyond their control. Their vendor also is out of fuel down in Portland. When I checked on it yesterday, and then their vendor, their next vendor is someplace in New York, and that terminal went, went down broken. So it's beyond their control, you know, they tried, they ordered it like Wednesday of last week, and then it just.
You actually broke up right when you first were telling us what you're talking about. So you're having trouble with what, Leroy?
Fuel.
Fuel, the fuel. But it's, it's not there, it's out of their control. I did check on it. There, there, I don't know if you got the rest of it. Their vendor was out of fuel also. So, you know, again, beyond their control, you know, they're doing all they can to to do it. That's, that's all I got to really add to the report. That that's all stuff that, you know, it's cropped up in the last couple of days. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Leroy, the reduction in flights from Cape Air, I'm looking at the sheriff now, does that affect your, your law enforcement, because they have fewer flights to monitor in and out, correct?
Well, yes, it does. And it also makes it a little easier, because we don't want to develop that situation.
So is the two flights they cancel shorten the day, or is the first flight and the last flight still at the same time?
I believe the first and the last, I'd have to check on that one. I know there was a later departure, but I almost think they originally had brought that back anyway, so.
But your issue.
I'm thinking it's, I'm, I'm thinking it's the same duty day for the sheriff. And I think it's just the midday flights are different, I believe.
So what do you do? Just add up the hours there at the airport, and that constitutes their workday?
Well, they're still working the same schedules as a patrolman. It's six days on, four days off, it's ten hour, ten hour days, just like working a contract.
Yep.
Okay. So is, I'm not hearing other airports in Maine running out of fuel like, like Bangor's still on fuel, Portland's still on fuel, right?
Right, right. You know, they've got, they've also got a lot more storage than than Bar Harbor has. And of course, you know, we, the, the, the story that I got from the Columbia folks yesterday was Portland's terminal, the depot that they get their fuel from was out of avgas.
Yeah, it's, it's, oh, my point is it's a depot, not the airport.
Correct, correct. Yeah. Yeah.
And you, you, from the email you sent out, it does, it looks like Cape Air, it's not going to impact their schedule? They've made other arrangements for fuel at Bar Harbor?
So far, that's what we're hoping. From what I understood, that the, you know, the Columbia folks actually held back a little bit of fuel just so they could service Cape Air if needed. So, you know, that, that, the, the big deal, the big issue is Cape Air has, they can't come inbound with enough fuel to go back to Boston because of the loads. So I, hopefully, we won't get to that place, but, you know, I just wanted to let you be aware of what was kind of going on on here.
I'm going to move to accept and file airport managers' July report as presented.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
And the second, and the second one came up with this, I, I do not have a land lease with anybody. Talking with Cornell, we, we just wanted to throw that, this project on the agenda, just to have everybody's eyes on it. And I, I have reached out to, the, the next step in, in this process is, and I believe I, I sent you, you, you all an email on it, is getting the plot survey to remove it from aviation use. And I, I did reach out to Hurricane Salisbury on Thursday, I think it was, of last week. I talked to Steve, I forwarded him some information. He was going to get back to me the first of the week here to, to, with a, a cost and a timeline. Originally, he said forty five days off the hip, so. And then that'll take care of another big hurdle. So, you know, we, we, we have some money in reserve. Talking with, with Scott Atkins, when he was here, he didn't like spending money directly out of the reserve. So we, we showed it, we'll, we'll show it as a transfer to, to pay that bill when it, when it comes in. So we're looking at a twenty year lease for a, the people that we're talking to is, is a, is a marine type of business right on the corner of Ramp Road and Crusoe Drive. And he's looking for about fifty, I think we figured it out, about fifty eight thousand square feet there.
So Leroy, from, did it say that the, is it the FAA released other plots that could be potentially used for, for other projects down the road?
We could, you know, we, and I have to be honest, what I'm trying to do is get through this process. So I really get a half an understanding on where we're going. There is a few other plots down there near the ramp, you know, one, one comment from the Maine DOT, from the gentleman at the Maine DOT was, why don't you just remove all of that land? All the seaplane ramp area land from aviation use, and you could do whatever you want down there and build whatever, however you chose to. I'm not really sure we really want to do all of that, but you know, it wasn't, it was an option. This was the second plot that we had looked at for this gentleman. The first one just had a lot, he was really encroaching on some wetlands, and I think it was really going to restrict everything. And permitting was going to be a nightmare. So we, we picked a plot that was a little drier, and he seemed to think it would work for him. So we, we've been working on this thing now for some time, you know, this, this started probably a year plus ago. It just came to head, we got the FAA approval at the building that, that he wanted to put on the plot, well, can go on the plot. So that was four months in the waiting to, to get that available, so that, you know, that brought us to this step.
It's my, it's my understanding that property taken out of airport use is easier than vice versa. Because
Right, right.
So. My feeling has always been that it should all be aviation use until, you know, we determine, you know, find something like this.
Right.
Who's doing the opposite.
I, I am, I, that, that's kind of why I put the rest of that seaplane ramp area on the back burner, because, you know, it's like, okay, let's, let's just work on, we, we know this parcel is, you know, a viable parcel. We, we have somebody that wants it. So, you know, let's move it forward and leave, leave the rest of the airport alone. And, you know, if we want to put, I have another parcel at the, the building did get approved on. So we can probably go out for two RFPs, I would say, you know, early this fall. And see how we can, maybe, maybe we can get a couple of parcels of land, one for a hangar and then this one, non-aviation. So things, things are, you know, the, the first step was to get, okay, you know, we have a building concept. The FAA says that building can go on that parcel. So, you know, that, that was kind of huge. And then before we moved on to spending any more money on it.
Well, you know, you read about every month about, you know, an airport, you know, losing an airport because of non-aviation uses. And I simply wouldn't want, you know, with all the challenges with Columbia and, you know, some of us are starting to worry that, you know, we could be losing pieces, you know, like it could be a, you know, slow decline. And we don't want to see that. That's a viable, that's a viable part of this county that we, you know, want to protect. And to me, I mean, this parcel probably makes sense for this use. But, you know, I know other airports in Maine are being taken over by non-aviation uses that aren't so nice. And I hate to see that happen here.
Yeah, and I, I think, and I'm with you, Paul, you know, I don't, I, I wouldn't bring anything to you that I felt was going to dep, you know, deteriorate the aviation side of this airport in any way. You know, I, I, this project, I think, is a good revenue project. And, you know, it, it's a parcel of land that really can't be used for aviation use, you know, it's on the wrong side of everything. And in our master plan, it was, you know, it's been pulled out, it's been, you know, in our airport layout plan, it's been, you know, depicted as non-aviation use and also. So, you know, it's like, okay, it's kind of that, it's a nice piece of land, but we really couldn't put a hangar on it, it's too far away. You could put a, maybe a, a remote maintenance repair, you know, widget fixer shop, but it really, I think this is probably the best use for this.
And quite frankly, the building is a hangar.
Right, right. Yeah.
Do you have a motion for the?
I do. Move to authorize airport manager to obtain property survey and legal description of parcel SR seven, transfer the cost of survey and legal work from the airport, undesignated fund four twenty, four zero two zero dash zero zero to account four zero three zero dash two zero zero, professional services.
Others in favor? No, 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 discussion, sorry. We have, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I know. Well, you want to second that, John?
Yeah.
Because I, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering why we're taking any action on this to step. First of all, when you get ready to transfer, if you want to transfer, we should have a transfer sheet in front of us to approve. But as far as what you're doing now is, is the work that you need to do to prepare us to make final action on whether or not we wanted the lease. So it sounds premature for us to be taking any official action today. Simply giving you our blessing to proceed with your, with what you're doing. And if it comes to fruition, come back with your paperwork for transfer, and we'll take action on whether or not we want to approve a lease. So I, I think, I think it's premature to take any action today.
Doesn't he have to have the, the survey done for it?
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's no different than the sheriff talking to the town, you know, some school about resource officer and spending money to research whether or not he can pull that off. It's the same thing that, I mean, this is funds that the airport manager has to be used for, for these purposes. And for us to be approving the use of those funds, I think it's, it's borderline micromanagement. I think that's, that's, he's told us, he's been working on this, he's kept us updated. At some point, he's going to come to us for final action. And today's not that day. I, I think it's premature. I don't want to send the message out to department heads that you can't even do preliminary work on a project you're, you're anticipating without our approval. And thanks for keeping us advised, but come back to us when we, when you need official action, so.
My only reason to make this motion is that, you know, that there's no doubt that we know that there's money that needs to be spent. I mean, he needs a survey, he needs a property description further. And I see that our administrator is a con.
Yes, the difference, Bill, is that the sheriff working on that project, he has budgeted money or staff to do it. I think where he's working on a project, that he's using undesignated funds. And to use undesignated funds, as I understand it, commissioners need to authorize the expenditure of that. And that's why that's.
We should have a transfer sheet in front of us to vote on, and we don't have that. That's when that becomes official. There is a, a transfer sheet, and we vote on, take action, sign the transfer sheet. And that's not, we don't have that today. That's the official action we should be taking.
And that's why I stated that I didn't have that piece of paper in, but the idea is the same, that.
We've had this problem in the past quarter, that we take action like that today, then, you know, months down the road, we get this paper, and I can't remember if we took action on it or not. You know, it's, it's kind of a.
Well, if that's the case, then I'd say table it and I'll have a, a sheet for you.
Not a big deal.
That's right, I can withdraw my.
Okay, so I'm going to move, I'm going to table this to the next, that meeting.
Draw your.
Okay, yeah, so, well, that was a second. So I'm going to move the table this item to the
Second meeting?
Second meeting in August, because we haven't really determined on that yet. Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, my, my intent was not really to get any action really taken, it was more of information.
And I didn't want to think my comments, Leroy, are negative towards your.
Oh, no, no.
It's a process I want to keep, keep clear.
And I was pretty clear of it, you know, a few days ago too, so.
Okay, so my motion, table this item just next.
Can I seconded that motion?
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. I only have one more little, little note is they're starting to work on the easements for the land clearing projects. And just so we all keep it in the back of our mind, we're going to have to front the money for those easements. And then once we've acquired the easement, we go to the FAA and they reimburse as a normal grant process, so. I just, I just want to make sure we all kind of keep that in our mind, that we're going to have to front some money on that. All right, other than that, I have nothing.
All right, Andy. EMA, how are you doing today?
Good morning, commissioners.
You've got your monthly report. Do you have anything else to speak to according to the report?
I, I, I do not.
So I'm going to move to accept and file the EMA, EMA directors' July report as presented.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, Tim. Back to John.
How you doing?
Tim's changed slightly. Hopefully, he's catching a big fish in New York. Commissioners, I do have a, a host of things on our list for the jail today. And I have the request of approval to hire Angela Hall of Lemoine as a part-time on-call as-needed corrections officer at pay level nine A with no benefits effective August sixth.
Some move. Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have the next request, request for approval to hire Farren Gray of Dedham as a part-time on-call as-needed corrections officer at a pay level nine A with no benefits, effective August sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Some move. Second, others in favor?
Aye.
The next request is request for approval to hire Brian Pierre of Bangor as a part-time, part-time on-call as-needed corrections officer at pay level nine A with no benefits, effective August sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Some move. Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is accept the resignation of corrections officer Richard Bronson, effective July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Some move. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Next is to accept their request from corrections officer Rebecca Long to move from full-time to part-time on-call as needed at pay level nine C with no benefits, effective July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Some move. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last is request approval to remove Shona Wright from the Hanko County payroll.
Some move. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, commissioners, very much.
So how, with all that done, staffing?
Stinks.
Stinks.
Staffing is not great. We have three officers' positions that are open.
Full time?
Full time. Full-time. Rebecca Long was a sergeant, which leaves a vacancy in my supervisor pool as well. Uh, so we have three out, uh, we have three openings and then one out. So that's four officers, that's an entire shift at the jail technically is out. Uh, and that's not including vacations. Right now, people are trying to get vacations, time off during the summer and fall. And so for the next thirty days, until we can get these people trained up to fill those vacancies, it's gonna be pretty, uh, pretty exciting at the jail. Uh, so, just to let you know, we're, uh, we're, we're doing all we can. Uh, we have not filled the seven, seven positions and absorbed, uh, one of those officers into the regular shift schedule and just leaving those two shifts open during the days. Uh, so, we'll, we'll see how these officers work out. We have another one, hopefully at the next commissioners' meeting, we may get another employee as well. But again, these are hiring as part-time officers rather than filling those full-time vacancies.
Do you have a corporal on Long's?
We do.
So the corporal's still in?
Yes, but she's relatively new. She just got out of the academy. She's been a corporal for about a month and a half.
She'll get her feet wet in there either.
She is gonna get her feet wet and hurt. Um, so.
Shep, is there a common denominator with these people? I mean, there's, how long has Rebecca been here?
Two or three years.
Is it pay? Is it conditions? Is it administration?
Maybe it's me, I don't know, but, uh, it's, I think, uh, a lot of factors that play in. For each one of the officers that are leaving, um, they're looking for more stable hours. Uh, sometimes the pay really doesn't factor in, sometimes it does. Some of them are going out for medical. Um, I know some of the officers that I've taught to simply can't continue to work eighteen's. So, and that's something that's a nature of the jail. When you have a, uh, an officer that gets hired full-time, the first weekend they work three eighteen's in a row, it's rough on staff, it's rough on retention. Uh, so, it's something that's systemic. It's not just our jail. Uh, Cumberland County's down a hundred officers. And, uh, so we're in a lot better shape than others, uh, but it's systemic right now.
Is, is there, I mean, when does it start affecting, you know, your population and who you can take? I mean, what, what's, what are alternatives? I can touch on that. I, I, I don't, I just bobble, you know, what do we do?
We can't go below four. That's the state mandatory minimums, that we can't go below, below four officers on a shift. Um, but it's not much that we're not already doing. Uh, I know Tim has tried online, uh, we've tried to increase the hiring pool. You guys have lowered the age of hiring, you've increased the pay. Um, I don't know. I'm at a loss. Because it's not just us, everywhere's hiring. I get it. I get it. And it's hard when we have not the most, we have a very unique job that we do. It's not for everybody and not everybody wants to work at a jail. So, I don't know.
Well, you can, you can make sandwiches in Subway and Bangor right now for twenty-five bucks an hour, starting today. So.
What, what, is there state, I mean, is the state helping address this in any way? I mean, I, I just don't know. What if you can't keep four? What happens? What, I mean, do you, do you stop taking people in? Can, can you do that? What, what happens?
Then you call an add. That's what happens. That's why Sossi and I are on-call. Like on nights, if there's a hospital run, we're coming in. If there's a vacancy and it can't be filled, we're coming in. And so we're trying to, to meet that. Uh, I volunteered to work a couple shifts for, for some, a corporal just yesterday, simply because they need their time off, too. Uh, and if they can't get their time off, well, it doesn't help morale, it doesn't help retention.
State's never really been, you know, the salvation, I mean, go back to the Board of Corrections and whatnot, you see how, how, but that works, so.
And they're in the same boat. I mean, the state is in the same boat. They're, they're trying to pay people a lot of money to try to retain them, still.
Well, you hear that's on the radio, we're here.
Yes.
You know, but I, you know, at, at some point, like, is not taking people in an option, or do you fire them out?
I don't think statutorily you can do that. I mean, you have a, a court order, a warrant, or a safety issue. You can't tie law enforcement's hands. And during COVID, some of the jails were doing that, trying to divert them to other areas. It just, it wasn't, it wasn't a solution.
Does, are any of the other jails doing, uh, signing bonuses or anything along those lines? Has that been affected, or what's the share?
You speak to them? Again, York County, excuse me, York County is, uh, offering a fifteen hundred dollar sign-on bonus. Uh, Kennebec County, one of the problems they run into is something that we run into fairly often. A lot of people calling in sick, and a lot of the reason they call in sick is because they're exhausted. And they are offering, uh, if you go a thirty-day period and do not call in sick or, you know, work your shifts as just, as you're scheduled to work, the county issues them a hundred dollar gas card. I mean, there's some creative stuff going on. Uh, but, and, and you talk about, uh, with, with Shep and them, it's unbelievable. Two weeks ago, we had, uh, the state was here doing their evaluation of the facility, and despite everything that Frank just said, how difficult it is, we scored a hundred percent. So despite all the tough stuff, the administration up there is turning themselves inside out, and we scored a hundred percent, perfect score of it. So that's something that, that everybody should be proud of here, what they're doing up there.
Oh, I, I, please don't, I, I don't know what's going on, I just like, it's just not sustainable for everybody.
It isn't. And, uh, we had, uh, last month, we had a retreat with the sheriffs, we have one every summer. And we met, and I met with Chief Deputy Gagnon down in Cumberland County. They had less than fifty percent staff. Uh, they're over a hundred people short, and for thirteen weekends, he worked Saturday and Sunday, double shifts, just to help get through. That's how short they are in those other facilities. And going for beating gets that crazy here, but, you know, you take the size of that jail, and as proportionately, they're really almost dealing with the same issues here.
Is there any seasonality to this? Does that mean, is it gonna get better as the season?
Everybody want to go to jail, put their sentences off till the winter, come into the winter when they didn't have any seasonal jobs.
Oh, I didn't think of that. I thought, I thought, you know, I was hoping there would be a little reprieve, but that still doesn't change the statistic, right?
It doesn't. Our biggest intake year, uh, intake month was September last year. That was our biggest, which is unusual, because the sheriff's right. Normally, it was January, right after Christmas, everybody gets days of execution until the time. But last year, September was our highs.
And, and part of it, too, is the population that we have in there. Uh, the, the residents, that's a term that we use, uh, that are in there, are in there on much more serious crimes. You're looking at, at drug trafficking charges, you're looking at people that are in there on murder charges, sexual assault and stuff. And can't make bail, or bail is not available to them, so they're, they're waiting a long period of time, trying to work through the backlog of the court. So there, there's a lot of things that, in a perfect world, if those things weren't there, a big portion of your, of your population would be gone. But if you look at how long some of the people are, are sitting in jail because of the crimes they committed, uh, prior to going to court, uh, and being sentenced to the state facility, it's ridiculous.
Is that, is that a culmination of the courts prosecution, or is it the courts exclusively?
Uh, it, that's a big part of it, commissioners, the courts and then getting things. I, if I've heard it once, I've heard it a thousand times, that I heard from an attorney, they say, well, my client wants, wants to, uh, postpone this and that, because they'll postpone it and do their time in the county jail, waiting sentencing, up or waiting for a trial. And then it'll come time, and they say, okay, we're gonna give you time served, so they're gonna plead guilty, they've done their time in the county jail, where normally they would have been sentenced to a state facility. So they're playing, they're playing the game, uh, of serving time here, when they should get that through the court system, get them sentenced and get them to the state facility.
Yeah, at our expense.
At our expense. Exactly, exactly at our expense.
I have three sentenced inmates right now, out of all the population, I only have three. Out of a population, right now, fifty-two, three are sentenced.
And that, that has an impact for a number of reasons. For example, Dennis doesn't have the, the trustees for, for service and whatnot. Community doesn't have trustees anymore for, you know, for public service. So it affects that and whatnot.
Ripples everything.
We had a, years ago, whatnot, we had an inmate in jail and whatnot for arson, spent three years and two months in jail, waiting to get to trial, you know, and got time served. So he served his entire sentence for arson in the county jail, so.
And, again, at our expense.
At our, at our expense, yep.
At our expense. I, I, I have to deal with a situation at my business, like, you know, man was just in the paper, you know, for pretty serious drug trafficking. The day after you read about him, he's in, he's in our business causing all kinds of trouble. You know, I, it's just, I, 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 I don't know what the answer is, other than, you know, maybe a good beating, but I, you know, then I'd be in jail. You know? But it just, it's discouraging, I don't know. Thank you for doing what you do, but I, I just, I wish it was an answer.
So, I, would we ever entertain the idea of doing, uh, assigning bonus to try to encourage?
I'll tell you, the novelist idea I've heard and whatnot is, is rewarding them for not taking sick time, because, well, honestly, gentlemen, it's a game they play. If you make new work in overtime shifts, I'm gonna take another one while sick to make up for it. So they get time and a half for working overtime, and then they get their regular pay for being sick. So you see, it's a, it's a money game for them. So if you could somehow come up with a creative way to, to cut down on that sick time that they're calling in, which, I'm sorry, folks upstairs, but, uh, a lot of this is bogus. You know, if you can cut down on that, I think that's a big savings for, and so, in, in operations as well as, so. I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to look at some kind of a bonus for every thirty days you didn't call in sick. If, if you take three, three gas cards, a hundred, that's three hundred dollars. That doesn't even cover one overtime shift for so many people higher on filling one of those shifts where somebody calls in sick. Chef, feel free to come back with something creative like that.
Well, and, and the other side of this is, you know, we've got to look at the nature of the beast. I mean, I couldn't do that. You know, you guys, that's admirable, you know? Again, I, I don't have the answer, but it's.
Look, if you think it's bad, losing CEO is when you start losing your administration. That's exactly right. And that scares me more than anything, because we lost a key person here, or we've lost two key people in the last two years out of the administration. We, we can continue to find CEOs.
Theoretically.
Theoretically. I'll tell you, good administration.
You just lost a sergeant.
Yeah. But if we start losing the Sheps and the Tims and whatnot, that's.
Look, and, and the other side of this is just, just what they described. We're, we're housing folks that really we shouldn't be housing. We, we, if the state were doing what they needed to be doing.
Tim and Shep have been turning themselves inside out for an inmate that we've had in here for an extended period of time, severe mental health issues, severe mental health issues. And I'm not even gonna begin to share with you some of the antics that were going on, uh, because of the mental illness that he had. And they have worked for months and months, and finally have persuaded the state to take this person. They sent you down a warrant where they have a intensive mental health unit, where this person can get the treatment that they should have. But the amount of time and work and effort and money that was spent trying to keep this person as safe as they possibly can, and keep the staff as safe as they possibly can, is, which gave to death, we had to sit down and figure out how much that was.
Well, that kind of stuff goes without saying, but the, the part that everybody in Hancock, it's, they're paying for this.
That's right.
You know, this is on our dime, why this shouldn't be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyways, I'm sorry to preach.
I'm here, I'm here from Augusta, I'm here to help you. I'm just trying to come up with some options to try to help.
I would appreciate it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
It's really important to retain our staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, retain our staff means retaining, you know, our administration, which we, you know, both are important. And, uh, I don't know, the slope is, throwing money at it doesn't always solve it. In fact, sometimes it compounds the issue, but creative issue, creative solutions are, to me, what this is about.
If it doesn't work, then it does.
Yeah.
You know, and you talk about losing administration, one of the counties just lost a sheriff who resigned to take a chief's job in a community. And talking to him, he said, got a little more money, but I don't have a jail to deal with.
Who was it?
Tim Carroll, down in North County.
Really?
He took the chief's job down in Rockland.
Carroll for here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep, and Chief, uh, Pat Polkey was the chief deputy down there. And he was just, uh, Monday, he was just sworn in as a sheriff, he's a smart kid. He'll, he'll do a good job, but.
Where did, where did Tim go?
Tim went to Rockland. He grew up in, down in Rockland, and that's, uh, that's where he is. Much with all due respect to everybody involved in that, I hope there's not a drain of people leaving the sheriff's office and going down and being a patrolman down in Rockland. You know, that's always one of those fears, but Timmy was, was a great human being and a great administrator, and Pat is as well. But, you know, when you make comments that I don't have a deal to worry about, that's, that says a lot.
And there's, I mean, we have to have jail. I mean, that's the other thing I've been thinking about. How do we not have a jail? You can't.
You spend a bazillion dollars boarding them out, if you can find a place to board them. And, and you try to board them out, and you know, you're running the same thing that they do. They have to run minimum staffing, and they don't, you know, if you look at the Somerset counties where there's room, you look at Two Bridges down in, down in Lincoln and, uh, Sagahawk County, they have room, but they don't have corrections officers. York County, same thing. Cumberland County, there, there are a ton of open beds. But they don't have staff either. So it's not as if we could just load everybody on a bus and drop them off at, at, at a different facility, at a cost. It's just, nobody has staffing.
And then, there are a couple counties that share jail.
That's, that's Sagahawk and Lincoln, that's Two Bridges.
Okay.
Yes.
If we could turn the clock back, I'll tell you, gentlemen, I'd love to, you're sharing one right now with all known, not Scott.
Yes.
You know.
Absolutely.
A three hundred, three hundred and fifty bed with the economy scale, you know, that. John Madden, years ago, under Wallace County government, he couldn't do it. In one's full swoop, so he decided that what he'd do is pick away at it. First thing he went after was the jails. Well, be careful what you wish for, if you want to get.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
Sorry to belabor this, but I'm just.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chef.
Maybe we'll be hearing from you, Sheriff, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, commissioners, very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, Sheriff, now you're in the position.
Okay, and we'll continue with the resignation, accept the resignation of David Law to patrol deputy effective August sixth, twenty-two, to Eastbound Conference Street, and take aside this position.
Some move, and we're sure of the best of luck. All right, Sheriff.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Request approval to hire Justin Burnett of Parnell as a part-time deputy as needed effective August sixth, twenty-two, twelve A on a pay scale.
So.
Second.
Twelve A is the proper?
That's the proper, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, that's interesting, please. Oh, you are phasing out your part-time people, you're. We are, but our goal is, we're gonna have to back, we're gonna start backfilling down to MDEA. One of the deputies that applied for that just got approved background and all of that time, so we'll be going down there within a month. We don't need to backfill that position back here. So, and then we'll still have an open position down at MDEA. This, this guy has, has finished part, phase one of his training, uh, part-time, to be a part-time officer, and he still needs the eighty hours, so he'll be getting eighty hours riding with patrolmen, running the ways of the world.
So, part-time is, is not a stopgap thing, or is it?
No, it isn't. Because they're, they're limited to a thousand seventy hours a year. Anything above and beyond that, that'd be, uh, an academy graduate. Now, most of the time, you know, a thousand seventy hours is a lot, a lot of hours. Uh, but when you start looking at, feeling like back in the jail, you start looking at filling those shifts like that, it doesn't take long to accumulate those hours on.
Is he full-time potential?
Yes, absolutely, he's full-time potential.
Roman, keep it.
Yeah, that's, that's our goal. Uh, two things, I think, I believe I sent, uh, all three of you and Cornell two separate emails. The first one was the price increase on the Civil. That legislation finally will go into effect next Monday. We've notified the Bureau Association in Hancock County. Uh, I spoke to Cornell, and we gotta get it on the, uh, on the county website, and we'll take care of that. And also on our Facebook page. A very substantial increase from sixteen dollars to forty.
State increased their rate?
Correct. The state, so DHS papers are gonna go from eight dollars to forty dollars. And that was one of the things that held it up. So regardless of what your papers are, whether it is, uh, a state paper, DHS, or from the Attorney General's Office, or whatever, or junk Q citizen, you pay forty dollars plus your mileage.
They're not getting their.
They're not getting a, a free ride, really.
I'm surprised you pulled that off.
Well, that, that was a big argument in. Well, that, that was a big argument in appropriations down there. There was, excuse me, around three hundred thousand dollars left with the state. But the legislature looked at it, these changes have not, these price changes have not been since nineteen eighty-five. And it's one of those things that we talk about from time to time. If you take a little nip every time, a little bit this year, a little bit this year, you don't end up with having to take these big jumps. You know, this went from sixteen dollars to server paper to forty dollars. That's a big jump. Go from eight dollars to forty dollars, that's a big jump.
Well, and this is the increase we were talking about during budget season.
Correct. It just, hope, we had hoped it would go into effect as emergency legislation, uh, when the, when they were still in session, but it didn't. So it, it's a hundred days, the eighth of this month, uh, after legislature closes.
Do you anticipate that in your revenue?
Yeah, we anticipated that it would walk in.
That's right.
Yeah, don't look at it, just, yeah. So, and the other one was that.
Excuse me, uh, do you think in, in twenty-three civil process will be self-sufficient?
I'd like to think so. We'll, we'll take a peek at it, but that's part of this conversation under commissioners for, uh, wage increase estimate. Because patrol, that contract expires the thirty-first of December and I haven't been able, we haven't been able to put anything together because I just need to have a sense on where, where we're going to go with that.
But as I remember the budget process last year, hadn't we figured some of the civil process?
All of it, yes.
We had.
We had.
You mean factored in our revenue figures?
Yeah. Because we increased from a hundred and fifteen thousand revenue, which has been for, for years, we increased it to, I believe, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. We thought we generated with these increased fees.
So, so the point I'm trying to make is this year, we're not going to see that.
No.
All that increase because we have already factored it in prior.
Correct. Correct. And the last thing was when you approved Deputy Stanley's purchase of his canine. Last weekend, he assisted the state police with a search over in Blue Hill where, uh, they found some weapons on a person who was arrested, arrested for possession of a firearm by a felon. Uh, pup didn't find him, they found the guns before the pup got there, so, but he searched and didn't find anything else. He was clearing there, they got a call to go down on Mount Resort. And, uh, he did a track and found the person that we had had a warrant for that was, uh, running because we had warrants for the infodomicial violence and tracked the dog no time. So that proves his value. Thank you.
Did we vote, that was twelve A, right? We voted on it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. Dennis?
Good morning, gentlemen. Do you have any, uh, thing to add to the report itself?
Uh, no, any questions? I'm going to move to accept the file facility directors July report is presented.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is, uh, a request to approve the packet of policies that you've. This is, uh, just while you're contemplating. This will be done in a spot-by-spot approach. Each department have given a copy of these and will, will, will work with them to conduct each of the VDT assessments and the benchmarks that each department might need to achieve on a yearly basis. And, uh, which will allow us to schedule on our normal calendar, a ten, time each year when we can go countywide. And those departments that are able to conduct their own training will do so. And we'll fill in the gaps wherever needed to get us into compliance on an automatic basis in March each. I move to approve the safety policies as presented by the facilities director, Dennis Walz.
Second, discussion? Just quickly looking through this then, so you really need to go back and have somebody check it. For example, some of the spelling.
Yeah, sure.
You have to compete, you mean to say complete, there's places in there that need it really to.
Yeah, understood that the proofreading might not be a thousand percent, but we'll make sure it is.
Sheriff, have you seen this before today?
He has his own.
Okay, so you're not, he, the sheriff's not involved in this particular.
We have so many of these that we have to do every year, Commissioner. You know.
They have their own catalog.
Next week, the fire extinguisher training.
Yes.
We've already orchestrated that online, the lifting, the, uh, putting it into workstation, the urban economics, all of those things we completed.
This is strictly for county. Non, non-morals of our corrections.
Okay. Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
And. Abatement?
Yes, you saw it. You have a copy of the proposal?
Yeah.
And this is going to be in support of our flooring job up here at the top of the ramp. And we'll, uh, we'll hopefully end, we'll be out of the abatement game after this. This is the last of this tile in the building, which is why there's a bathroom. This is not in terrible shape, but while, let's just clear the books of asbestos.
Hey, curi- curiosity, what kind of square footage is this? Would you guess that?
Uh, this is like six hundred square feet.
I mean, I was actually kind of pleasantly surprised at the price.
Yeah, uh, it's all one area and wide open.
Okay.
I will schedule this for, uh, court's administrative time because we're going to have to close that area off even offensive with, um, the cell pain, closures and so forth. And provide, it'd be negative pressure.
Dennis, is this.
Test it, certify it afterward.
Is this for your signature or the chairman's?
Uh.
You know?
Except, except the proposal, at this amount, I'd say it's for you.
So your motion.
To seek to authorize the chairman's.
Your motion, Paul, should include the chairman to sign.
I move to approve the proposal dated July twenty-fifth from Eastern Main Environmental to Remover Disposal with asbestos floor tiles for six thousand two hundred dollars from account G one dash three zero zero, as presented and authorized chair sign. Doc.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else, Dennis?
That's it, gentlemen, thank you, we'll see this done.
So we've got your monthly report. Anything to add to us or?
Uh, just wanted to throw out there that a couple of weeks ago, uh, City of Ellsworth advertised for dispatchers for five dollars more an hour than our starting pay. A third of the possibility. It's just like a broken record on that as well. We've already talked to jail, I know it's, it's the same thing. We don't have people getting our orders down either. So, that's, I don't know, but I don't know the answer to that. They have a new contract, which is, I saw the price, I, 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 I got that back up.
Is the five dollar incremental rate up the scale?
I don't know, I, I imagine so. Can't, I can't imagine that the dispatcher would stick around, it's been there for a while, starting person's getting twenty-four, thirty-three or whatever it is. It was quite, quite a shock to see that.
Yeah, that's a problem, even it does, it's a both same situation. So any developments or anything you've heard more about, uh, Ellsworth's dispatch situation?
Uh, I know that their city council approved the funding that the, originally said they more and more approve. I know they've hired, um, a gentleman that ran local businesses as one of the dispatchers. So they're still utilizing some of their patrol and, uh, police personnel, uh, endings. Which I, I would say very low level of success. Uh, we found ourselves having to do some administrative work for them because they're not qualified to do some of that. Uh, I have spoken with them on that, that, you know, this is beyond our contractual thing and it's something that can wait. Probably should wait, uh, they agreed to do that. But we still seem to be the catch base and as we always have been for questions from some of the other agencies that they, you know, something they don't normally do. They're, they're calling us to, they either do it for them or tell them how to do it, which is fine. Uh, but some things we can't do. You know, we're not allowed to run background checks for the island agencies, for example, uh, things like that. But using, you know, there's little questions that come up, but we've, we've been doing quite a bit of stuff for them that because their folks aren't, they don't, they don't have access to the state general systems per se.
Where are you at, at, right now with your staffing levels, so?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm down one, uh, still, uh, joy position is still pretty much vacant, so I'm filling in basically during the day. And dispatch, I was spending a majority of my days in there. Uh, you know, we, we're fortunate enough that we're not running into the same shortages, shortages that say the jail has. Uh, because our folks are stepping up to, to cover. Uh, but it, again, it's summertime as well and it's getting difficult for those, those folks downstairs as well to, to just get the time because I'm, I'm not able to, for the most part, we have a shift open because, you know, minimal staffing that I have to keep down there. Uh, because it's because of the call volume for, for service and support for all the operations and everything else that they do down there. We have to have, have these two people on at all times. So, but.
You know, anecdotally, I had a city councilman suggest to me that county and city are set down and whatnot and come up with identical pay scales. I said, well, administrator and city manager and the chief and sheriff probably could do that. When you throw unions into it and stuff like that, I suspect that, so.
Well, I mean, I think that's tough because there are, there is a very different set of operations that happen in the dispatch world. I mean, we have nine-one-one, we have, you know, EMD, EFD, a lot of different, you know, we, we hold the, you know, if the district attorney decides that he has somebody that he wants, they go goes nationwide to, uh, you know, find. We have to maintain that file, we have to enter it into the system. You know, it's, it's not a city, it's a city of Ellsworth resident, for example. They don't put it in, we're, we're the agency that has to put that in. Uh, one of the whole of those ones, I, I, you probably remember a few years ago before they went to electronic warrants every time the court was in sessions, a judge would send down a stack of warrants, you know, inch stack that we would have to sit and enter every single one uh, into the, into the systems, we have four different systems. Uh, and that was always, you know, that was a nice show thing. You go, you have five hundred warrants, you got to add in, you know, for five dollars because they didn't show up to pay their last five bucks. And, and, uh, they do that now, but we still, NCIC warrants and things like that, the nationwide stuff, we, we still have to, to maintain those files with the DA. So there's, there's a lot of things that we, we do that the local dispatchers don't have to, uh, just because of statute or whatever. They're continuing to try to pile more and more on, like the, the nine-eight-eight thing, the AED registry thing. And it's like, ah, you know, we, we send them a very strong, hey, you know, this is, this is a nice idea. The AED thing, for example, uh, you know, fire, they kind of initiated that Hancock County, we jumped on with it because it's directly affects the RCC. Uh, and the state decided that's a great idea and they're, I mean, they're mandating that all these other counties that may or may not have spilling. We were fortunate that all that was free. The interfaces, those other agencies like Andersgård, and they use a different CAD, they, they're being required to pay for their interface out of pocket. The state's not providing that. Uh, you know, we, we have, we have a very large liability question, you know? We, we direct a nine-one-one caller to cross a busy street to find an AED that's two hundred feet over there. And they get run over crossing the street, who's liable on that? Uh, nobody can answer that question, you know? Uh, we, you have a, a business that's, say your business and you have an AED, if we send four different people, four different calls over there to grab your AED, who's paying for your supplies, who's paying for your batteries? You're going to get tired of paying for that eventually and you're going to ship it back, well, you sent them, you pay it. It's like, that's.
Well, not, not only that, you know, I can't, the state's mandating all these things and, you know, the people like us won't have an AED.
Well, that's the issue as well, and, and, you know, they're, they want counties to come up with their own policies. Uh, okay, but, you know, how about, you know, so the county RCC director, we have that organization, not going to, we all pretty much all had the same concerns, uh, which I haven't heard back on the results of the working period, but, but the rulemaking, you know, we as an organization said, this is a great thing, however, maybe you should be running this program and you should be administering, you know, managing all the AEDs. You know, they want us to follow up, we've got five hundred AEDs in Hancock County, they want us to reach out to every single person. I don't have dispatchers looking for something to do. Uh, and I'm certainly not looking for something to do on top of everything else that's going on, so we have heard back. It's, it's just frustrating, you know? It's, it's always meant to help, it's always well-intended, but it's left on the counties, the agencies to make it happen.
I'm going to move to accept the file as the state director's July report is presented.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, both.
I'm going to move to approve monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Um, aye.
I'm going to move to hire Mary Jordan of All Fam as finance assistant, step eight H effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Did you say eight?
No, H.
A.
AH. Eight H.
Oh, that was.
Is it eight H? Was it AH? Eight H.
Eight H.
So.
Uh, agenda says nine F.
Yeah.
So it's eight H S H.
I realized, um, that I was looking at the incorrect scale for the finance assistant and clerk. So I changed it to the eight scale. Brought it up to the appropriate level, so it's eight H.
Snob, others in favor? Is it eight H? Yeah, I seconded that.
All right, others in favor?
No.
Discussion.
Hang on a second. Patrice said I did, no, it's like a, so I'm going to officially second your motion.
Discussion. Not discussion.
Uh, the only discussion I have is I've known Mary for years and whatnot, it's outstanding person, she's going to be a real benefit to the team there. This, this is a wonderful.
This is good news.
This is good news.
Absolutely.
This is not a bad news.
Oh, yeah, she's extensive background, but she's a nice person on top of that, you know? Patricia's known for years, yeah. So we're very fortunate to, Mary's taken this.
All right, others in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Now we're on to our commissioner. Project timeline review. You don't need the actual much of time, we just need to look at it.
I just wanted to make sure that, um, I've not been through the process with you before, that this was, uh, scheduled that you are comfortable with. You know, I have talked to Scott, he is, uh, kind of working on a twenty-three budget proposal. Because it's a significantly sized Excel spreadsheet, it's so stretchy. And we hope to have some, uh, beginning budgets, probably four or five of them at your next meeting. We review and then you'll have the rest of them at your G C set.
And I imagine the hope is that we eventually move this over to Trio must have a budgeting.
Here it is, man. Budgeting.
Trio has a budgeting module and a, a couple of the department heads so far have asked for their individual department reports to start with.
Because the Excel spreadsheets are usually great for the person who developed.
Yeah.
And then Cornell, you went and threw it twice, so.
Yeah, it's a pretty sizable file, in fact, the, the master file on payroll employees links to the budget file. So we're getting Scott all the union contracts and non-union wage scale information and he can enter that and then that will link to the to the master budget file.
Sheriff, Dennis.
Dennis. Uh, yes. I like the Trio side because with each, uh, budget line, I can include notes. So that as it moves up the line, everyone that moves out and see. So that as it moves up the line, everyone that moves out and see is at least a glimpse into the reasoning or the fact there's no change or whatever. When that's transferred over to the spreadsheets, as Cornell and Monica for the for the bean counters is, they can do whatever they can manipulate in wonderful ways. But those notes are lost in that translation usually. So I'll do it whatever way's best, but I like the tree.
All right, so our dates look good. I like your layout too. Looks good.
Something, Jim, I think we should look at closely this year. That is if we set up the budget advisory committees schedule. And I talked to Cornell about this, then we go back and look. Because I think last year we had a, we had given them certain departments, and I think we were done in forty minutes. You know what I mean? And my suggestion to Cornell was that perhaps we could group these together so that we might be able to get this done in two meetings. I mean, if you're going to get all dressed up and drive in from Stoneington, you might as well stay here for a couple of hours, get some work done. You know, so anyways, I don't think there's any need to have like four budget advisory committees.
The last two years, I think we've done it three meetings.
Yeah, they did it three last year.
They did?
Yeah, and they they sort of set their own schedule, which I thought was.
Other than Scott, Scott gave them the schedule with the departments that would be available that night.
Oh. What they've always done is we've gotten an email from upstairs and saying, pick a Wednesday, which one works for you? And they traditionally have saved one Wednesday just for us because we have civil, we have law enforcement, we have the jail, we have drug task force and civil. So we have several different.
But with all due respect, Scott, though, once we got through the sheriff's budget, those others fell off. So you might have had five budgets, but the truth of matter is that the time consumer was the sheriff's budget and the rest of it were, you know, I mean, contracts. It's an in and out. I mean, there's no discussion.
That's right, but what I actually.
I'm just saying that I'm I'm not sure that it wouldn't be unacceptable to to include others with your your budget and the other five you have, so.
So you're saying Congress, two instead of three?
Well, I think I think we could pull this off in two, especially the the methodology they're using now and in with with agreement between the commissioners and the department head, there's not a lot of discussion. That's that's driving that process faster, so.
Well, is that something that we should let the BAC decide is my only question?
Well, I mean, if if Cornell wanted to talk to Kathleen, who's been the chairman there for the last three, four years, I don't think she would object that we're going to try to crowd more into a, you know. It's just, it's one less meeting that we have to come to too. Because I tried, I tried to get to every one of them, so anyways.
All right. When you say you've got a request from the administrator's office or from the BAC?
Administrator's office. These are the dates, Wednesdays in October, which one works for you? And we pick the first on the third and check one.
Because that's a given. It's always a Wednesday and that's first October, yes.
But I agree. It was only three weeks last year, and despite all the things that we had and I'm responsible for, I don't think we were much over a half an hour, forty minutes, and we pulled that through pretty quickly. The only thing that would concern me this time is see on this agenda. Because that's going to be noticeable, I think, in all the counties.
Wage increase.
Yeah, that's true.
But the truth of the matter is that wage increase is applicable to the BAC only for non-union. So they have no, they have no ability to to affect the union wage increases. That's negotiable, you know, collective bargaining issues, so. So Cornell, you don't need anything from us.
No, I just wanted to brief you on that we are getting started on the budget. We'll have some budgets for you at your next meeting. This is the schedule that's laid out. That we're working with Scott, hired him to get the budgets going. And I'll call Kathleen, although I think they like at their first meeting, the chair is in annual position, but can at least get a sense from her whether she thought we could just plan to schedule three meetings and then in need of form, they have time based upon their critical base sheet there, so.
Well, what we're talking about is not three and four, but two and three now, right?
That's what I'm telling you.
There's two, I think they had four tentative.
Yes.
They hit it in three.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to her whether she thinks she can go from three to two.
Yeah, that's what Bill, that's what Bill's.
Yeah.
Now I gotta, I gotta cut, no, she's going to be the next chairman too, so.
Ask her name back.
All right, so we have.
Not a highly contested.
No. The commissioners have all reviewed the caucus, our caucus dates at the Jefferson, of course, we rate.
Okay, so I'm going to move to set the budget advisory committee's caucus for Tuesday, August twenty third at one P M. for District One, is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
For District One in the commissioners' meeting room in Hancock County Courthouse, fifty State Street, Elsworth, Maine. Thursday, sorry, I'm fixing something. Thursday, August twenty fifth for District Two at the Casting Town Office.
Twenty fifth or twenty?
It's changed. What is that one?
Put it on your desk there.
I'm sorry. I read that and I didn't realize, okay, so for Tuesday, August twenty third at two P M. at the Bucksport Town Office. And Thursday, August twenty fifth at two P M. for District Three at the Mount Desert Town Office, twenty one C Street, Mount Desert, Maine, at three P M. Wait a second. At at three P M., three P M., right?
Yeah. You could have Patrice, you all said.
I'll, this will be.
Yeah, he always has everything.
This will be concise, but is everybody clear when I've just moved, I know less, sounding like a mess.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to suck up that mess.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're over to our wage increase estimate.
So in order for us to go on and let us, we kind of need a starting point, a tentative amount that we put in for wage increases to effect five months from now. So that's what the request is. Some of your union contracts are seven percent. I think, given the inflation rate that you'd be in, at least the five percent.
The problem with setting that today is is that we may say that, well, we need to give them a guideline or something so they can work, but it it kind of gets cast in stone, you know, as we go along. It's it's, you set five percent, six percent, something like that today, and then at some point you want to reduce it to three or four. Good.
My feeling is that this is cast in stone because that's what we have in the union contract. We just got, you know, we've been picking up, picking away at the mess that having different rigs created. And I just don't want to get in that same mess again, you know. Probably none of us would see the mess, you know, because it takes, it takes a few years to develop. But we sort of had to fix it, and I just hate to hand somebody else the same problem. I said, I, you know, I I really think we're going to stay consider, I mean, I don't like it, but the reality is that I think we got to do that.
So last year it was a four percent.
Well, the thing is that we got three union contracts and they got different increases for each contract. No, but we stand as all.
Patrol, which expires December thirty first, was the first one. That was seven, seven, seven over the three years. Dispatch was next. They got seven, seven, and seven, and you just signed a contract this year with corrections for seven, seven, and seven.
I guess, you know, the numbers don't be there.
Well, that that's, that's my point. I mean, I don't like it, but we're just creating, at some point we have to decide, you know, that we're going to be consistent. And, you know, we've been building up to that. I mean, I haven't been here very long, but my sense is that we've been trying to do that to solve, you know, host problems. And I think we're almost there to just go back and dump it on somebody else. Doesn't seem right to me. Again, I don't like it, but it's.
Well, I don't know what there is to not like, except the fact that it's going to cost us more to retain employees. But, well, to me, it's, to me, this really gives us a pretty firm guide when we have seven, seven, and seven on the three union contracts. So let's just do it.
Well, and and, you know, what I don't like about it is that, you know, the county assessment to the municipalities, I mean, that's who we have to share responsibility to. But with that said, I think it is the responsible thing to do because we're consistent.
Well, if inflation wasn't where it's at, I think it would be a lot harder discussion. Timeline of when to begin negotiations with patrol coming up, because that would give you an idea of what they're asking for. And I'm waiting to get a copy of what Elsworth's new contract was, just to give us a guideline.
So that expires, what, December, September?
December thirty first.
December thirty first?
Correct. Correct.
Well, because ideally it'd be nice to know, you know, start negotiations early, but sometimes that doesn't happen, so.
You won't get notice from Teamsters for a hundred, hundred and twenty days, so if by the end of, end of this month, you'll get a notice, it's time to negotiate.
The, I guess the good part of it was when when you first signed that patrol one, that went very quickly. And then the other two fell in line very quickly too. So it wasn't one of these months and months and months of negotiating, and then we got arguing about back pay and all that kind of stuff. Everybody was pretty much in agreement pretty, pretty quickly as far as the payroll, as far as the salary.
Well, the ball's in the Teamsters' court, all right? They would have to, they'd have to file and give us notice for, right, listed demands, right? Let's, let's put a bug in.
Dan Allen, yeah.
Well, Dan or, yeah.
Joe.
Or Joe's and get it going. I also has a July, June fiscal year.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, what did they just, they must have just approved, what did they give their non-union? What is it, Billy, no?
I don't.
There's no sense looking at it.
Is it necessary?
Well, I was thinking, well, in defense of if we could approve seven percent for it. Because what we're approving today is the non-union wage increases. That's all we can approve today. We can't approve union. So I'm just curious, I mean, that would have been a good defense if we found the city also had six, seventy percent for the non-union staff. Monica, are you trying to find out, Paul?
Is it, is it meant to have a decision made today or is it just for discussion?
It's, whatever we say today, Monica, you, I don't know. It won't be anything less. It's just, you know, politically and.
By first round, so.
Yeah, whether it's a practical matter, it's tough to reduce it, you know, so. Almost like a bad face, once we throw that out. Regardless of what else, I'm just curious, we could use that as a defense if if they mirror that. But Paul, I'm I'm ready to prove.
We should, so. Because I'm green. Only been this through once, been through this once. The last agreement. We have one more agreement coming up that you mentioned, the patrol.
Law enforcement side, yes.
Law enforcement. And that's going to be modeled, I mean.
It's, it was actually the first one to go up to seven, up to previous contract.
Correct? Okay, so that's the one that steers.
It's the one that's established.
I was trying to figure out which one was steering which one.
As I did, the law enforcement one was approved first, the following year, dispatch, the ICC was next, and that was, that mirrored what law enforcement side said in this year, you just signed the corrections. And that went very quickly.
Well, this, okay, and then that covers. But what we're doing today is just, it's not a multi-year thing. What we're doing today is just this year.
Yeah, that's not, we're not even doing it.
Okay.
For the non-union.
Okay.
So we're not doing it.
So I'm going to move to set a tentative seven percent wage increase for non-union employees to prepare the twenty twenty three budget.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, that was less. That still hurts. It's going to hurt worse when, you know, a few of the towns start squatting. I mean, I just see. All right, so. What's the, can somebody explain that one to me? What? The, the opioid settlement amount, what?
Well, it was a class action filed and whatnot, and we had the opportunity to join the class action, and we voted to to join it. And this is the pro, some of the proceeds from that that they're getting ready to distribute, I guess.
And that's not a multi-year thing. Three years, I believe.
Three payments. I don't know if it's over each year.
I don't, no, I don't know.
I don't know, but but after this first one, there are some fees that you're going to take out of the amount, so we need less than one year.
So this is the first payment, the first one. They just want to know by next Monday that you are in agreement with the amount. Well, I think it should be ten times this, but in actuality, we can't, you know, it is what it is, right? It's not zero.
Nope. It's fifty four.
Okay, I'm going to move to confirm the opioid settlement amount of fifty four thousand, sixty one dollars, thirty one cents to the Maine Attorney General's Office.
I think you're going to have to put in there, Paul, subject to a seven percent holdback because we're not going to get that full fifty four. You look at your last page, top of your last page, it talks about this, a seven percent holdback to create a backstop fund and any shortfall from the Attorney General's Office.
Yeah, but do we know if that's already taken out when they calculated this or not?
No, because it's, it's.
They just asked us to confirm this, right? Because this is how I read this.
How I read it. That they were going to be fee deductions at future payments, but.
But that amount came from them for us to confirm.
Yeah. That, that last page there.
I think that first payment is not subject to the holdback. First payment represents the exact amounts.
Right.
The county received, so your, your motion's appropriate, Paul, for the first one, for the first year. And I'll second that motion as presented.
Boy, that's rare. I deemed appropriate.
Any discussion? Where do they, where do the funds get deposited in the account? Please be going in.
Commissioner, Commissioner Scott. I'm going to ask you for a big raise this year.
Seven percent.
We're putting one in.
Good question. We, I guess, where's it go, Monica? Where's?
I don't know. I'd have to just look. I don't know. I'd have to just look.
I will just set up a fund for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put it into us.
It'd be nice if this went to actually.
Yeah.
You know.
Something related to recovery or.
Well.
We can.
Something to. The opioid relief, isn't it?
Well, there was another fifty papers of.
Yes.
Documents about where you could spend money.
Okay. All right. So we're not getting a.
It's gonna go to fine. It's not a rainy day, so. All right, sounds good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So the next one. You still in?
Still in.
All right.
Still here.
I'm gonna move to approve the three-year employment agreement with Michael Crocker of Newburgh. As county administrator as presented.
Second the motion?
And this is, thank you, this is, I'm, I think all of us are looking very forward to this. I think our, I think county staff is. I, I, I couldn't be more pleased. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
And I gotta tell you, Michael, you're coming in. An enviable position because it's almost unanimous with department heads, with commissioners, with consultants and whatnot. You are the number one, so I mean, you're, you're really standing out at the top, so.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure. And what I'm particularly looking forward to is, you know. I feel this county government's new to you, but the, I think the concepts aren't, and I think this is gonna be a great place to grow into, and, and I. Uh, uh, again, I've said it twice already, I'm really looking forward to it.
That's right. Thank you. I look forward to it.
What are your thoughts after sitting here for the last couple of hours, Mike?
Not putting you on the spot.
I mean, my initial thought is not as bad as I thought, but I think that's everybody's on their best behavior today. I don't know, so.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it for today. Next, next meeting is what, twenty-third?
Oh, that's been one of the, if you're speaking next meeting.
Yeah. You know, because it, I'm gonna, I've, uh, I'm gonna change my schedule for August twenty-third. The next meeting.
Okay, and then I, uh, I also had the same problem in November.
Is that a five-day work, uh, five Tuesday?
No, that's, uh, that's, uh. And I'm sorry I didn't get more notice on the April, on this month, I just. I didn't know, but.
Would you say November?
November.
See, November's the same thing. It's five Tuesdays, November, so we can go to the twenty-second of November for that too.
Okay, so my only problem with the idea of us switching, that's Thanksgiving week. Everybody's gonna want to be cool here. And us doing a meeting. That amount of grumbling, I don't know. Paul mentioned that he might be able to do the meeting remotely. That one, I, in November, and. I'm kind of in favor of Paul trading. I mean, we have time, obviously, but, uh. I would like to see maybe if we could just do Paul remotely on it directly, because that month is just so busy.
And always for me, you know, working up at half day, two, three days, I feel.
But, and the retails, that's.
That's a busy, busy, busy.
To Black Friday, and coming, I mean, like, I can't, I don't know if I can get off that day.
You know, vacation.
Yeah, it's that much more complicated.
I, I personally do look at.
If we can keep it, if we can try to keep it.
The only thing remote, I'd be doing from a hotel room, and sometimes they, you know, not the best internet, but I, I think we'd figure it out. I, I mean, I would absolutely have to be out of the meeting for. Probably ten-thirty, eleven. It's in a different time zone, so I can't.
Okay.
We could try to keep the agenda short.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we don't need to, we don't do it.
Yeah. So I only have to make a decision tonight, we still have, but that's my business to try to keep it, to keep that on the fifteen.
It's tentative that you have the informational meeting on your budget. I assume I didn't take that last time.
Yeah. And there's no vote there, it's just an informational.
I remember where that, right?
Information. It's really just a formality. I mean, it just.
Yeah.
It's not even a presentation, you know.
All right, well, we can come back to revising.
But we are all set for the twenty-third.
Yeah, we're all set for the twenty-third. Anything else?
Me. Move to adjourn.
Second the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.